To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Ann, will you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Oh, who do we have? McManus?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
De Good?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
It's noted that a guest in early is absent and excused.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. We actually have a couple of sets of public comments, one right now, one at the end of the meeting, and we have two public hearings early in the agenda, one on the Village at Garfield and one on 716 Boone Street. If anybody would like to comment specifically about either of those two matters, I'd suggest maybe hold the comments until we're focused on those, but everybody's free to tell us whatever they'd like to at this point. So we'll open the floor to public comment. If anybody has anything to tell us, we ask you come to the podium, state your name, and tell us what you'd like to tell us. Doesn't look like anybody wants to talk with us yet. Okay, we'll close this public comment and move along. Next item is to review the agenda. If anybody has a conflict of interest, we should hear about that now, and if not, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Next up is a review of the minutes from our June 28th meeting. Does anyone have any suggested changes to those?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the June 28th meeting as presented.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's as well. Next up is correspondence. John, any correspondence to be made aware of tonight?
Yes, there's actually one email that's on your desk from Cara Yule, and that's regarding the master plan process.
We're going to talk about that later on?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Then next up are reports, and see Molly's not here. Does anybody have a town board report?
Molly's absence, the town board did approve the major amendment to the Olson PUD to permit the residential dwellings there at the Olson Shopping Center.
Okay, thanks, John. Bob, any ZBA report tonight?
No meeting.
Okay, thanks. Chris, anything from Parks and Rec?
No meeting.
Joe, I guess we meet next week on the joint planning commission, so nothing there. John or Steve, any staff report?
I have one item. Steve and I will be at Silver Lake Park this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. as part of the pop-up event related to the master plan, so we will be out there conducting a mini visual preference survey and development types. We did, as referenced earlier, the communication from Cara Yule regarding some of that process for the master plan community engagement. We've taken that into consideration. One of the things we have found is that when we do talk with public about different development types, and it's basically showing different types of housing or different types of commercial buildings, is to keep it very simple and not get into anything too complex. It's just preferences based on the images that we hopefully give a good variety and to give feedback on. So we'll be, again, we'll be out at Silver Lake from 10:00 to 1:00 this Saturday, and then we'll provide feedback on that event for the study session later this month.
Great, thanks.
That's pretty much it.
That's it for now.
All right. And I see you've got in our packet the regular monthly report you gave to the town board. Next up is unfinished business. First up is item 6A, Planning Department Report 2023-83, the Village of Garfield, or at Garfield, special use public here, special use permit, public hearing. One of you, Steve or John, going to tee that up for us?
Yes. So this is a proposal for basically the northwest corner of Garfield Road and Hammond Road. It's roughly about 13 acres of currently undeveloped land, and the proposal is to construct an 80-unit multifamily housing development at this site. It is zoned R3 multifamily residential, which permits such development through a special use permit. At this time, they are just presenting for the purpose of the public hearing as part of the SUP process.
Okay. Is there anybody from the applicant tonight that wants to, would you like to make any kind of presentation so the public knows what you're up to? Okay. As you know, the planning commission is pretty familiar with the project, but public hearing and all, some folks may
Right.
know what's going on. Thanks.
Yep, thanks. Brian Stadler here with Outlook Development and Wall Gas Corporation, developer for the project, and also I have Andy Purvis here with Gosling Zubek, our civil engineer. So as you're familiar, we're looking to build 80 multifamily apartments on zone property. This is our second meeting. I think we've pretty much got probably four or five things left on our list to take care of here in the next few weeks. Further staff report, which are all attainable from what we can see. So Andy, you want to share anything further?
Yeah. Andy Purvis with Gosling Zubek. I have the plan here. I guess, do we want to make a presentation to the public or see if they have any?
Will you show that on the screen, Steve?
I didn't bring it up this time.
We need to bring the laptop, sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Okay, then yeah, if you could.
Okay. So, you got it.
Yep.
All right. So since we were here last month, we did communicate with Metro Fire and the Road Commission, and the Metro Fire deemed that one access point is acceptable for up to 100 units, and we're at 80. So they were in agreeance that we go to one entrance, and speaking to the Road Commission, if we went to one entrance, they preferred that the southernmost entrance be removed, and that's the one that's closest to the gas station. So, so we came up with a revised configuration to accommodate the one access point, so.
I think another thing just worth mentioning, our density is at the bottom level of density for our zoning, so we've got a lot of green space. So it's really, you know, from a standpoint, pretty high quality development, pretty desirable.
Thanks, fellows. At this point, then, I guess we'll open it to the public. If anybody has any comments or questions, we would ask that you come forward, speak into the microphone, even though we can hear you from where you are. There's, the meeting gets recorded, and so it needs to get spoken into the microphone.
Jay Zarimic, Jay Zarimic from Hammond Place, 2117 Hammond Place West. This is the first meeting I've been at to know about these plans, so it's interesting to me. I am the president of the board of Hammond Place, and I see that the single entrance, it looks like, will be directly across from Hammond Place. Is that correct? Right here in Hammond Place? This is Garfield?
It will be close, and that's part of the Road Commission. They would, typically they like that entrances are across from each other just for turning in and out of Garfield, but then also for drivers coming out of Hammond Place or coming out of the apartment to be able to see each other.
I'm guessing that if you've already talked to all of those entities, this is pretty close to being certain. Is that correct?
We're going, we're going through the plan, or the planning process, so there's, this meeting's a public hearing, and then there's one more findings of fact.
I know I've heard concerns about the entrance being directly across from us. We already have, you know, there's another condominium association down here, and if we're turning into here, what these people usually do is turn into the turning lane, which it's about the only way they can get through there. So that creates some difficulties for us, but I'm just thinking out loud. This is 80 units, and when do you expect to begin construction?
It's really hard to say at this point, but we would hope to early next year.
Early next year, meaning like, what's a year? Is that January, February?
Yeah, January, February, whenever the weather committee.
Well, does weather permit in January? Can you?
It can.
Okay, and are you going to talk about what kind of units are there? Is this affordable housing? Are these apartments? Are these condominiums?
They're affordable apartments, two and three bedroom.
Two and three bedroom affordable?
Yeah.
Any idea what, what that affordability range is?
Yeah, I think units are probably 600 to 900 range, might be up to 1,000.
Okay, and two and three bedroom, correct?
Yeah, 40 of each.
Forty of each, okay. So there's, there's no other kind of units? That is, there's no, there's no homes, there's no condos, it will all be apartments? Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anybody else with any comments or questions that they'd like to tell us or ask us? John, just to clarify, if this, if we are in favor of things this evening, what we do is we'll direct staff to do findings of fact. Is there another public hearing that would be had at the town board level on this or not?
No, the planning commission in this case is the approval authority, so there would be one subsequent meeting you'd have on August 9th, and then that would be what you would consider making your final decision.
Okay. Seems like we have seen this before. It sounds like, I would have thought the Hammond Place folks would have been aware of this beforehand. That's directly across the street. There's got to be within 300 feet.
There was a rezoning that actually happened la, I think that was last year, last summer. So there was a rezoning to rezone it from agriculture to R3, which is what the current zoning is in accordance with the featured land use map in the master plan. So there was notice at that point. That was just for the rezoning, and then for the development review, there's just the single, for a special use permit, there's just a single public hearing.
Okay.
Like I, like I mentioned, in terms of the density, they're roughly at six units per acre, so, which typically in the R3, you can usually get up, you know, to 10 units an acre, a little bit more than that.
I don't see, I don't think I'm seeing anything that shows where the Hammond Place access drive is, but it sounds like where this is located is perhaps right across, in my recollection. Is that typically what the Road Commission wants?
Yeah, that's what's desirable.
Yeah, you're essentially kind of making like an intersection there. That, that's for the safest movement for vehicles turning.
Yeah.
I don't believe it's straight across.
It's not.
If you look on the drawing, and I was looking at the aerial.
The aerial on page one of the staff report.
So the billboard shown on the plan, the entrance is south of the billboard. What's not shown is the entrance to Hammond Place.
Right. Yeah, I can't see that.
The entrance to Hammond Place is north of the billboard.
Oh, wow.
So they're not, they're offset.
You're right, Ed, you're right. It is, it is to the north end of the Hammond Place.
Now, I don't know what conflict or what concern that creates or doesn't create, but I believe that this planning commission would be deferring to the county road commission with already the number and the location of those entrances.
Typically, that's exactly right. The Road Commission is the entity that usually figures out the safest place in their opinion, and they're the supposed experts about where the points of access ought to be or ought not to be. In fact, even on this one, my recollection is when these guys were here a month or two ago, there were two accesses.
Right.
And the fire department has weighed in, and the Road Commission has weighed further in, and they eliminated the one closer to Hammond, which theoretically is probably music to our ears, to have one less driveway closer to Hammond Road.
I could check with them, see what that, I mean, typically they have a certain spacing requirement that they, a standard that they like to follow. I don't know if that's in the case here or not, but I could follow up with them just to see.
Yeah, the only thing, we're still in a public hearing too, but I don't want to off topic, but the, it did eliminate the potential to cross-connect between the gas station and this. We had the two entrances. There was some talk about cross-connect, but looking at this, there really isn't much way to cross-connect now. But I understand the Road Commission's desire to move that driveway as far as they can away from, from Hammond. It would make sense that they wouldn't want to jam that intersection up. So I understand what they're doing, and it makes sense, but it did eliminate the cross-connection, because there was talk about eliminating one of the driveways to the gas station by doing that.
True. Right, they were looking at constructing a roundabout there, but that's been essentially tabled for now. They are upgrading the signal there, so that's, you know, for the foreseeable future, it will be a signalized intersection.
Okay. You raise a good point, but we're still in public hearing. I guess, has anybody else from the public got anything they want to ask us or tell us on this? And if so, please come and speak. If not, we'll close public hearing and just bring it back to us and the applicant. Okay, we'll close this public hearing.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to add that the elimination of the drive, it's, we look at it as more of a benefit, because that potential for that access from commercial directly to residential, you know, frankly, was not desirable for us, because it's not a good mix. I think with this layout, it provides, if they do come back with a turnabout, that it provides the Road Commission an opportunity to basically take part of our property there that we're not using and create that lone driveway for the gas station should that come about, which then isn't connecting to us, which I actually think is a good thing not to have that, those two connected, residential and commercial.
Thanks. Commissioners, any comments, thoughts, questions that haven't been raised before?
So when he brought up the fact about the Hammond Place, what is the density over there? Is it close to, would it be the same? Is it six to an acre?
I do. Quite honestly, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to take a look at that.
Right. I got to imagine it's a pretty good density as wells are stacked in there, that it's not going to be a whole big, this place is not going to be a lot.
Yeah, I don't know how many units and then how many acres are there, but yeah, I'd say you got quite a few units there, and they might consume more land, but probably, probably, pretty close. I mean, at six units an acre?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just comparing.
I think the parcel goes further back, but yeah, the density of the units themselves are substantial.
Other commissioners, any comments, questions? It looks like there were a couple of things still not totally resolved yet in the staff report, but then you've got those all covered as conditions of things that have to get provided.
Yeah, probably the, I mean, none of these are really major issues. I think Andy did indicate that the Eagle was going to be on site this Monday, July 17th.
For the wetland.
For the wetland verification, and certainly that's not really issue on this site, because they are set back so far from that area, but certainly the verification is what's required. So that will, that's probably the big thing just from a scheduling standpoint, but the, all the other items are fairly minor.
Okay. Well, in the report, staff had a proposed motion, if anybody is prepared to make that or has any other thoughts.
Just one question regarding the traffic study. Did, did the county road commission indicate any concern for a need for a traffic study?
What is your conversation? I have not heard from them.
No, they did not. They did not indicate directly that they had any concerns with that.
Willing to rely on them, so that was all I had to ask.
I can, I can talk with them about that as well, because I'll talk about the spacing between this driveway entrance and Hammond Place.
Yeah, I think it's more of a location safety concern, which I would, again, defer to them. You know, I don't know that you're going to add much capacity to Hammond or Garfield because of this development. So, and you cited that in the notes.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make the motion then, if nobody else has anything to, to direct staff to prepare the findings of fact for application, SUP 2023-03, submitted by Gosling Zubek Engineering Services Incorporated for special use permit for apartment complexes at parcel 0502304201, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 5, as indicated in PD report 2023-83.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion carries. So this will, the staff will now be preparing findings of fact and bringing those back to us to take a look at, at our meeting in about a month.
It'll be on August 9th.
Second Wednesday of August. So that's not a formal public hearing, but there's always public comment, so people could come and register if they would like to and tell us what they want us to know. Thanks. All right, we will move along. On the agenda, the next item is item 6B, Planning Department Report 2023-84, 716 Boone Street Special Use Permit Public Hearing. When are you going to set that one up?
I'll set this one up. This was introduced at the last meeting. This is an existing building at the corner of Woodmere and Boone with three tenant spaces. The current two are occupied by some commercial kitchen, kind of catering establishment, Center City Kitchen and Factory Man Roasting Company. This is another tenant space for a photography studio, which is listed as a special use permit allowable by special use permit in the industrial district. This is the IG zoning district on this corner. This is an existing site. The original approval goes all the way back to 1984, which we looked at when we first prepared the information on this, and it included such things as kind of the way the entrance is laid out and the building is laid out. They did not have to do landscaping on the north side on Boone, as we discovered in that approval from 1984. So some of this is sort of documenting what the existing conditions are, but then bringing some other things up, landscaping on the other sides, and some of the things like the parking for a while was double striped to ensure that that will go back to single, or like double stacked, make sure it will not be a double stacked parking. Some of these things are in the process of being addressed, but otherwise, the use as proposed is fairly straightforward. It's just taking up space in that existing building, and this is the opportunity for public hearing, and the applicants are here. They would like to add anything as well.
Okay, if the applicant would like to maybe make a presentation and inform the public in case anybody is interested in finding out what your project is all about, if you can direct your comments to them, that'd be great. Thanks.
I'm Jamie Kirchner with Cracker Jack Photography Studio, and I have a business partner who's not here tonight, but her name is Nicole Martin, and we have, the two of our businesses will be housed in this space as a professional photography studio. We both provide professional portrait photography, so pretty low impact. We work with families or individuals making portraits. So we'll be seeing clients by appointment only. It's pretty low impact. We're not making a lot of changes to the outside of the building, pretty much using it as is. And then Ryan Wells is the property manager, and he is here with me also.
Anything else, Ryan, that you want to tell the public about what you guys are proposing to do?
No, pretty straightforward. Ryan Wells, agent for Leeswell Incorporated, the owner of the property, and so we're just here to support Jamie and Nicole in their application for a special use permit. As Jamie said, it's a low impact, no modifications to the building, no modification to the exterior of the building, no special concerns for sewers or water, river maybe. So, yeah, just here to answer any questions.
Great, thanks, Ryan. We'll open it to the public then. If anybody has any comments or questions or thoughts on this one, please come to the mic and tell us what you'd like to tell us. And as often the case, folks are here for other reasons, so we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any comments, thoughts? Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Real quick, on the dumpster corral layout, it's eight feet wide. Generally, our, the dumpster alone is seven feet wide. We would like to see at least 11 foot width corral to effectively service a dumpster. If you're going to be using a metal dumpster, of course, the 96 gallon biototes would fit in that space just fine, but just to service it, I know that it's pretty tight back there. My concern, of course, would be parking, but I think we're in there fairly early. Parking along that, it's pretty tight back to where the corral is going to be. So I think we're in fairly early, so I don't think it'll be an issue, but just the width of the corral, if you can increase that a little bit.
So our engineers, Ryan Cox, our PE'd engineer that did our drawings and researched the requirements for the dumpster, are you saying that 11 feet is the minimum requirement?
To service it.
Is that a zone? Is that in the zoning laws?
Let's check. I don't think, I don't think it is, no.
I'm sorry. Was it 11 foot, was the minimum requirement?
We're checking the zoning ordinance.
Check it out. I think it's in section 516, or if you need.
Also too, of course, your employees would probably have to walk around it too. If it's only eight feet wide, the dumpster alone is seven feet wide. It'd be very tight in there.
It doesn't have a, I don't see a minimum width in that section, section 516?
I don't think there is.
Yeah. Is that more a standard with GFL?
Because the width of the truck and the, and the forks that come down to service it, we, you wouldn't, we wouldn't want to be hitting a post at, if it's only eight feet wide, if the truck starts to slide a little bit as he lifts it up. So if you can increase the width of that corral, that'd be great, to 11 feet.
That's a formal request, that you want us to change it from eight feet to 11 feet?
That's what, that's what, that we, I, we, I would like to see, or we would like to see it, yeah, to service it effectively.
Also, to provide context, you work for GFL, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's the context. It's not in the zoning ordinance, but you have the, yeah, expertise of that, so.
Okay, bring it.
Yeah, we can make, make note of that. Comment on that.
Steve, I'm curious, the Center City Kitchen and the coffee roaster, that's Mundo's, are those both special uses as well?
As what they are is, at least what they're described in their applications and previous permits, was a commercial kitchen, which we have as catering establishment, where it's more, it's the production is kind of the main focus. There might be some like accessory service, but the main focus is the production. And there's a few of that, like in that kind of Barlow corridor as well, like Cherry Capital Foods is kind of in that category, so, yeah.
And then the Coffee House?
At least from our understanding, is kind of more of a production as well. At least that was, was listed on, because that goes back to when Mundo's had their original permit. We went back to that. One of the issues that came up in researching this was when Mundo's went in, originally it was going to be just that middle tenant space, and they had taken over some additional space. This sort of gets us back to the newer coffee roasting place is just in the middle tenant space again, as was in Mundo's original permit. So this takes over kind of that additional space, so that won't happen again.
We have eliminated the, the double parking. We didn't know that that was a no-no. Mundo's operated that way, and I wasn't aware that, that that was frowned upon. It looked like they had it working out amongst their customers and themselves, but as soon as they moved out, we eliminated the double parking, and there hasn't been there since January.
All right, perfect.
Oh, I apologize. So there's a different coffee roaster there now, so, okay.
Yeah, correct. Mundo's relocated down to, technically in the city, because Boone is the border, but yeah, Boone and Garfield.
This just seems like one of those odd This just seems like one of those odd quirks. I don't know what you guys think, but where there's, you know, this is a special use, and I'm like, really? But thank you for playing ball with the ordinance and, and, you know.
From my understanding, it's a special use because it's in the industrial zone.
Right, yeah.
This is an industrial zone piece of property, so.
Right.
And I could be wrong, but my understanding, when, when the coffee roasting went in, it went in as an industrial roasting. The coffee shop was an accessory use. You're allowed certain square footage of coffee served to go with the commercial, or the industrial use. The industrial had to be the majority use of the building. I'm not sure if they violated that. At some point, it sounds like they did, but that's gone now. But, but that's what, my understanding of the special use is because it's in an industrial zone, so I have no problem with requiring them to go through it, quite frankly.
Yeah, I don't have a problem either. It's what's in the ordinance. It's just, you know, every so often one comes along where I'm like, you know, okay, I guess, thank you for doing this.
And same with this site being, like, this is smaller than kind of your typical industrial site. This is like less than half an acre. It's like, kind of like older development style, and more of like functions on this corner. Like you have the kitchen right across the street in Traverse City, so. It's a little bit different than ones we've seen before.
We're happy to comply with the, the ordinance. We wanna be good members of the community. I did have a question. On the letter from the township, it did say that there were grounds for the Township Planning Commission to waive some of the landscaping requirements, because there are quite a few mature growth trees on the property. And so it would, we would request some clarification or addressing the waiving of those landscaping requirements.
I was just gonna ask staff, I saw that in the report, and maybe you could generate some discussion on the commission. What are some of your suggestions and thoughts about the various buffers?
Yeah, so this is part of landscaping section allows, in this case, cause planning commission's reviewing it, they have the authority to look at and potentially waive some of the landscaper requirements. And there's credit for existing trees, and the larger they are, the more credit you get. So what we did for planning commissioners, what we did was look at all the different sides. So, we mentioned in, I think the intro, and we mentioned again here, the original approval nineteen eighty-four, along the north side, which is the Boone Street side, and also just the way that the building is placed and the kind of limited space. They granted them a waiver from doing anything on the north side, cause there's, there's no.
Right, that's not.
Space between, yeah, so. And that runs with that, that approval. We mentioned the east, south, and west, so on the east, that's where they're proposing the most. And the one thing we noted as staff was proposed as fifteen foot width. Minimum width is typically at twenty feet for this, this type of buffer. And at least, when we looked at it, indicated it seemed like there's enough space to do that. Potentially also, the two things that are kind of tied in here were the dumpster enclosures back there. This is also, if you see the aerial, or if you are kind of out there, it's gravel on that side of the building. And I don't know if we mentioned specifically, but in this report, but the, anywhere where it's like a maneuvering lane, needs to be paved for our ordinance. So one way to kind of rectify both of these, I don't know if, perhaps I could talk to the person who prepared your plan. I have not actually talked to him specifically yet, but potentially moving that up, so you don't need to go all the way back to the building, and then you have more space to widen the, the width of the landscape. It should just be more grass area. And then it kind of gets both of those. We, at least in our looking at it, indicated there appears to be enough room to do that on the east side, but otherwise, the amount of trees being proposed seems to be reasonable.
So Steve, let me just stop you there. I wanna talk about the east, and then we can talk about the south.
Then with the other ones, yep.
So what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
For the east is that there's probably adequate material proposed. You're just thinking that the width on which that material.
Yeah.
To be is, should be twenty feet rather than fifteen feet.
Correct.
Think that's reasonable, okay.
Yep.
Commissioners, what do you think about that?
I mean, I'm trying hard to come up with reasons to not give them some leniency on some landscaping requirements.
To do what? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'd like to give them some leniency and some relief on the landscape requirements. And I'm, and I'm confused by the, I guess I'm confused, Steve. What latitude do we have to give some leniency if we were so desired?
So the sec, it's on page five of our staff report. It's this, it's section five thirty H. It's basically whoever is the approval authority, it's a wordy way of saying it, but whoever is the approval authority, in case, this case, you are the approval authority, may waiver or adjust any requirement in this section in whole or in part, provided that one or more of the following conditions.
I understand that, actually. What I'm, what I'm curious about is, how deficient, I, I, I'm a little confused on how deficient it is. And if it's a fifteen versus twenty, twenty foot width, I'm kind, and it was, I'm confused about what the deficiencies are. And I'm confused about what deficiencies were previously granted, that we should continue to, are we, are we enforcing, continuing to grant leniencies that were previously allowed, or are we asking for more?
As I understand, the only thing from the past that happened was the north doesn't have to have any landscaping.
The north does not.
As per some decision somebody made forty years ago, so we're not talking north.
We're not talking about the north side.
Correct.
There's nothing that ties us at all, one way or another, about east, south, or west.
Yep.
And so, we're talking then about, there's big trees, there's little trees, diameters. I, I mean, I don't know. I think that there's personally plenty of landscaping around the perimeter. I'm curious, looking at the aerial now though, there's parking shown on the, in the gravel area on the east side. Is that to be continued to be used as parking?
No, we did put in the report, if it's, if it's parking, it's, the, the parking should only be on what's designated as a parking lot.
Okay, so that'll cease to be parking?
Yes.
Okay.
So if I understand things correctly, Chris, and I think I do, staff is not concerned about the fact that there may be fewer trees proposed than are required by the ordinance on the east part because of the size of the trees and the configuration. But they're just saying, we ought to at least treat the landscape area as being twenty feet, as per the ordinance, rather than shrink it five feet.
So we're not adding any, we're not adding five feet of landscaping, we're just saying the existing landscaping is if.
Leave it grass.
Is within twenty feet.
And leave it as grass, correct.
So it's, it's a no change.
At twenty feet, it's a no change?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the applicant doesn't have to add any, pay for any landscaping.
No, but the, the request is for a waiver of that, and that's what we have to decide. Do we grant that five foot waiver, or do we not?
If they're not, they can't use it as parking, I don't, I don't see the need to waiver.
I don't see it either.
I would agree, yeah.
Keeping it twenty might help prevent some of the illegal parking.
Right.
So I'm in favor of leaving it alone. And all we're, all, if I'm reading this right, we're, we're, the north, north doesn't apply. East, we're just standing even at twenty. South, no additional trees are proposed.
They have so many.
And west, it says an additional tree, so we're literally asking for one tree?
And they have provided, they indicated they're gonna provide that.
Okay, so the whole landscaping, you leave it at twenty feet and plant one tree? Okay. I don't think we need to vary anything from that myself.
I mean, if it's only one, I was not understanding, we're only asking for one tree, and that doesn't seem.
Yeah, we're asking for one tree.
Yep.
Is there any, as the applicant, or is there anything you feel you're looking to get a waiver from?
Uh, no, I just wanted clarification, so if, if what you're proposing, we put one tree in, we're more than happy to put a tree in. If I may, Steve had suggested moving the concrete pad and dumpster closer to Boone Street. I would tend to agree with that. I think Pat would agree with that as well. I just realized who you are. I talked to Pat quite a bit for service. G F L would prefer that the dumpsters are closer to the road. And I think he and I have talked about it, that they didn't want them back at the back end of the property. So if that's true, we would, we would agree to move the dumpster closer to Boone Street.
Perfect. Yep.
Anybody else with any questions? Are you guys okay with what we're talking about here?
Yeah, how would you like to formalize the moving of the dumpster closer to Boone Street?
I need to tweak that with, with the document here? Okay, where would that get tweaked? You wanna add that in, in one of these conditions?
Oh, to add into the motion?
But is the change of the location of the dumpster material to the ordinance? Or material to anything that we're reviewing?
It is to allow for the wider landscaping in the back, and to ensure that that does not become overflow parking. Uh, but to also just allow for services of the dumpster.
If they locate it in the back like that, they're gonna have to pave all the way back there. It's not just the pad itself. Cause we don't allow for gravel maneuvering areas, or gravel parking areas, or dirt parking areas. It all has to be some type of hard surface, like batuminous or concrete or something like that, so. It, it also allows them to not have to pave such an extensive area to, to get back there as well. So, and actually, they could provide, if they were to move it up front there, they could probably get another parking space on that site, at least adding another paved parking space.
What needs to get changed in the proposed motion to accomplish, somebody wants to accomplish with respect to the relocation of the dumpster?
We could say.
Number one talks about details on materials for the dumpster.
Right.
Could you say details on materials and location need to be provided and?
I like that.
Okay, I'm beginning to say that.
Again, I don't think we're dictating where it has to go.
I think you don't, you can have it up, I don't think you want it to go further than the, the building. You know what I mean? You wouldn't want that.
Not north of the building facade.
Yes, yeah, the front line of that building. I think you probably want it equal to, parallel to that, or something to that effect.
Well, John, do we need to?
Set back a little bit.
We need to modify something else?
I mean, you could either put in the motion, or you could have, potentially, we could just.
I think adding the location, and I think Steve, based on your conversation here, can work with them to.
Yeah.
Put that in satisfactory location and double check.
With the applicant and their agent.
G F L and go from there.
Yep.
And then with respect to the landscaping, item three says landscaping requirements shall be met unless the Planning Commission grants a waiver for specific landscaping requirements, so.
Just strike unless the Planning Commission grants a waiver, cause we're not granting a waiver. So number three should read landscaping requirements shall be met, period.
Didn't we reduce the number of trees required because of existing trees on site? Which we're okay with, but don't we need to say that?
Those are part of landscaping prices, that you get the credit for the.
Okay, so it's not a waiver.
That's not a waiver. That is just meeting it, yep.
All right. So, just indicate landscaping requirements shall be met, and then delete the rest of that proposed sentence?
Yep.
Sense?
May I ask one last question?
Sure.
I, I know that there's a requirement for a concrete sidewalk to connect our building sidewalk to the city sidewalk. It's my understanding, there are no other sidewalks from, I think it's, is it parked down to Eighth Street that connect a building to the city sidewalk. Is, is that an absolute, that you want us to put a concrete sidewalk in connecting the city sidewalk to our building?
You guys wanna discuss the sidewalk philosophy?
That is.
Requirements, the philosophy, but.
That is requirement, and that does not have a adjustment or waiver to it, yeah.
If I could add to that, there, there's a concrete driveway. It's approximately twenty feet wide that connects the city sidewalk to the building. So pedestrians can traverse across and remain on concrete anywhere on the sidewalk, up the driveway, which we're not allowed to park on anymore, and, and, and continue to the building.
The one that's also doesn't, is that loading area?
They strip that as a sidewalk? I mean, it seems, if there's already concrete all the way between the city sidewalk and the building, what more sidewalk can they?
It's, that's essentially a driveway. It's, it's a loading area for the building itself. It's not really.
Place for cars, not for people.
Exactly, that's. And the whole purpose of this is to provide safe access from sidewalks to the front of buildings.
I mean, I suppose that if you wanted to eliminate a parking spot and provide a pedestrian painted area from the street to the, could, would that be a possibility?
I, well, I'll be honest with you, painted stripes don't last long, particularly in the winter months. And so, either, either allow for it to be for vehicular purposes and accessing the building, or reduce the amount of pavement, so that it's actually to a scale that's for pedestrian use only.
I guess I haven't studied the site plan in a while. What, what are they showing with respect to a sidewalk?
It's, um, it is the kind of drive, it's also marked as the loading area off of Woodmere. Cause that does not connect to the parking lot generally.
Oh, there. So this is the connector that we're talking about, it goes through the landscape area then, right?
I think it's just under the trees, yeah.
Okay.
So there's an existing sidewalk running north to south.
Yep.
Adjacent to the building.
I see it.
And they're talking about that, and then using the loading area space to, as the, functionally as a sidewalk.
That concrete's in pretty bad shape for pedestrians to walk on it.
Well, and it sounds like that's not something that we can waive, even if we, that, that's a typical requirement. And in a lot of projects, people ask us, why are we being required to put a sidewalk that begins nowhere and goes nowhere? But the standard answer is because in fifty years, there's gonna be something built where nowhere was, and the sidewalks will connect. But if we don't get it built in the first place, we can never go back and say, you gotta put in a sidewalk.
In this case, there is a sidewalk along Woodmere, yeah, that's making that connection.
So this one isn't really a sidewalk to nowhere. It connects from the city sidewalk to your building without a pedestrian having to compete with vehicles. I guess that's the reason for that, so.
I guess they were happy to comply. I'm just, thought I would ask, there's a lot of concrete already there. I appreciate it's old, but.
I hear it. I hear you.
I'll make the motions.
Did we clarify the language on what the motion's gonna say on, we tweaked number one and number three, I think, did you?
I think so.
Okay, fair enough, Chris, fire away.
Motion to direct staff to prepare findings of fact for application, S U P twenty twenty-three dash oh-two, submitted by Jamie Kirchner and Nicole Martin for a special use permit for a professional studio at seven sixteen Boone Street, parcel number oh-five-one-three-five-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-zero, subject to the following additional information being provided by the applicant, items one through seven, as indicated in Planning Department Report, twenty twenty-three dash eighty-four, and edited as follows. Number one, details on materials and location for the dumpster enclosure need to be provided. And number three, shall be edited to read landscaping requirements shall be met, period.
Support. Any further discussion on that motion?
Just to clarify the motion, items two and then four through seven will remain as stated in the report.
That's my understanding of the motion.
That's my intent.
Good.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll be back in a month with findings of fact draft to work out.
Okay, thank you. Send that to me, if I can just coordinate directly and any last things. Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, next item on the agenda is item six C, Planning Department Report, twenty twenty-three dash eight-five, a review of staff's draft findings of fact for Burmley Meadows Site Condo. Which one of you wants to?
He's gonna have us cover this one. So this is that findings after the public hearing at last month's meeting. And the applicants are here to comment as well, but just as an overview, since you've seen this a couple times.
They may not be necessary for.
Yeah, exactly. You've seen this a couple times, and it's a proposed site condominium north of the existing Burmley State subdivision. You had previously, over the winter, looked at the other site condo at the south end of this, and they all together kind of. And they all together kind of make three phases of one neighborhood. The, a couple of things that are different are just presenting some of the information more formalized as the findings of fact and going through each of the standards. And then we did also receive a letter that I wanted to bring your attention to. At the back of this portion of the packet, it was from Dale Troutman.
It's in this packet?
It's in your packet, it is at the very back.
Is that something we hadn't seen before? I don't remember.
No, it was, he indicated he was not able to attend the public hearing, but provided a letter to the office and addressed it to the planning commission, just had a couple of questions on some of the things with the, with the site, with some of the utilities. We did speak to him and forwarded this to the applicants. Some of the things on utilities are just coordinating when things would actually happen. I think his site actually was the end of, uh, the water main actually terminates like right under his driveway. So just if and when that construction happens, they will have to coordinate when to connect into that. One other question that he did have, and actually if you look on the site plan itself, the... There's all the different lots proposed and then the private drive. But if you look, there are some lots that are part of the existing subdivision.
Which page do you want us looking at?
Um, it would be the, like, C 2.0.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, has all the lots. So there's the proposed private drive. Most of the lots, uh, or, I should say, all of the proposed new lots front on the private road, but also some of the existing subdivision lots front on this parcel as well. And there's some like existing portions of the road and they're, and talking with the applicants, there are some easements in place. I think the question this gentleman had was, since he fronts on the private road, would he become part of the condo association? And the answer would be no, because there's still easements that coordinate how like the private road and the public road connect to each other. So it's taken care of in some fashion, but the only ones that are in the condo association are the new lots. But otherwise, um...
So that's been taken care of?
Yeah, it was, answered the questions, yeah. It was, uh, when we actually look back, Burmley Hills kind of had the same thing where the roadway of the private road kind of extended up into the subdivision, but there's existing easements on kind of when and where the public ends and the private begins. So coordinating things like snow plowing will kind of follow that, that arrangement.
So how does that follow through 50 years from now? So if the people look at this and it's all different owners, that what you're saying right now is in the deeds are somehow illegal?
From what I understand, the easements, and easements were run with the land, so they would run...
The people over here are gonna suggest that them two lots pay for their snow plowing bill because that's gonna be part of the association. And if they, if you can't follow what you just conversed or...
Yeah, well, the ones that are in the association should be only the ones that are in this site condo. So the ones that are in the subdivision aren't gonna be part of that.
But you're gonna have an argument saying that them two should be part of the...
But they're, yeah, if you'd like to address that.
Carrie May with Point Engineering, I could probably answer that for you. So the way it works is the lots that are along here originally, that was gonna be a public road all the way through with the platted subdivision. But since this part was never built originally, this is now a site condo. And so all of the lots involved in this are part of the site condo. But those original platted lots have an easement deeded to their property to access from this same right of way, basically. And that would have been with the owner of the property before Mr. Zakrazik bought it and it would carry through to him. But then when it comes to the plowing, the agreement with the road commission is, you know, they don't have, when they're coming up here to plow this private road and there's a little stub here, or even on Springfield where there's a little stub, they have no place to turn around. So the association will have a maintenance agreement with the road commission that they will plow everything where there's no turnaround. And if you remember, last time at the water tower, we provided them a tee to turn their trucks around, so they'll plow that far. But on the other side, there was that stub and there's one gentleman that lives at the end of that. That's gonna be plowed by the association. Now, if he wants to kick in, I'm sure they would let him, but I don't, it won't be, obviously it wouldn't be mandated that he kick in. That's just gonna be part of the deal for them to do the subdivision.
So this is all clear that 50 years from now, we don't, there's not gonna, we're not creating problems for anybody?
It sounds like as part of what we're proposing to approve, that would not be able to be used by somebody to argue that these guys that are outside the site condo somehow have some obligations that we impose on.
Right, they, yeah, they wouldn't.
Because the agreement, would that be, is that recorded or will be recorded?
It will be, yes.
Exactly, okay.
So hopefully everybody had a chance to review the draft findings of fact. It looks like staff's opinion is that each of the required elements that needs to be met has been met. Does anybody have anything they want to ask staff or questions or comments about any of that? Or is this pretty straightforward at this point? It is a lot of silence. I'll, I'll take that to mean that nobody has any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the township board that, that application, wait a minute, let me go back to step.
Findings first.
Yeah, I skipped the motion here. There we go, I'll make a motion, findings of fact for application SRP 2023-04 submitted by TNR Investments, Investments for the Site Condom Anium Parcel 050260200-33 be presented to the Planning Department as presented in the Planning Department Report 2022-114 and being made part of this motion be adopted.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion?
Can I amend your motion, the, caught my own typo. PD Report 2023-85.
Oh, it says...
That's a one probably from Burmley.
That was probably Burmley Hills.
2023.
It's usually the year and then sequential order.
Eighty-five.
Twenty-three dash eight.
Which is the one I've just been reading.
My motion to read 2023-85 as far as the Planning Department Report.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Further, I'll make a motion to recommend to the Township Board that the application SRP 2023-04 be approved, subject to the following conditions, one through eight, as presented in Planning Department Report 2023-85.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The guy that wrote the letter, his name was on the citizen order of the property.
If it's buried in the back of the packet or stapled together, I read the front, but I don't, if it wasn't there before, I was frightened, but...
Sorry, we put it in the back, it was...
If you guys could call it to our attention, keep it in the front. So that going forward, I, I read everything, at least I think I do, I try to.
New things, new attachments in the front of the pack, okay, perfect.
Got it, thanks.
We'll do that.
I was just telling John, I, it listed all the owners of those surrounding properties, that name wasn't on one of them. So I was just curious which one was his. I couldn't, I couldn't really tell, but not a big deal, but I just curious.
All right, moving along on our agenda to item 6D, Planning Department Report 2023-86. Another review of findings of fact, this one for the Ridge 45, Phase 1 to 3 and Phase 4 SUP amendments. John, you gonna do this one?
Yes, so I think we're kind of finally coming to a close on this one and, uh, just for your information, so the, these are two applications, two SUP applications. And then we did receive confirmation from the legal counsel at the township that these could be merged into one SUP. So as this is finalized, kind of as part of the findings of fact, we'll be merging this as, creating basically a new file number for this. So it will eliminate all the other previous file numbers, whether it was Phase 1, 2, 3, or 4 of Ridge 45. It's going to be identified as a SUP 2023-05. So that will be reflected, it's, it's, it's part of this later in this report where we do provide a motion. But it's also gonna be in the report and decision order in how we go file forward. We're not removing any of those previous files, it's just gonna give us a fresh starting point. So going forward, we'll have one file, still referencing the old ones, but it'll be a clear reference. So we won't have to worry about Phases 1, 2, 3, even 4.
You'll be able to find things.
Hopefully, that's what we're working towards. But, so yes, this is Phases 1 through 3, which are already constructed. And really, the main discussion here has been the adjustment for Phase 4, which is that 196 units, which are being proposed, with similar buildings to what is, what done in the previous phases. We've provided background information and pretty much everything has been met and there's the findings of fact. There are just some minor items. One of the things on the landscaping plan, there are substantial amount of existing plantings on site. So that will, those will be accounted when they're actually get done with the grading and start going to finishing that up and those can be identified. We're just asking as part of this that, at least from the plan that's submitted to date, if they just give us some very specific locations of the plantings, species types, and the minimum planting sizes, just so we can adhere to the landscaping requirements. The reconstruction of Ridge Boulevard entry is underway right now. We still have that in here, although we expect that to be concluding sometime here soon. And then there's also the crosswalk that is going across Lefrane Road between Parkside Boulevard and the new Beta Station. We actually have a meeting on Monday afternoon to discuss that amongst all parties, including the applicant, Beta, and the road commission. So we'll be figuring out what would be the best approach on that. The remaining items in terms of the conditions or concerns that we have are just kind of the standard boilerplate stuff.
It looks like in the report, staff has once again taken us through all the required findings and it looks like in staff's opinion, at least everything has been met. Does anybody have any specific one of those, one or more of those that they want to ask questions about or disagree that they've been met?
Are we, do we have to make any note about the recommendation for the traffic study?
That's proposed to be waived under item 4 of the second motion, if that gets made.
Oh, I didn't see that. Hope you're right, excuse me, I did not see that.
Unless we think it shouldn't be waived, but it looks like Plan A would be as waived.
I just didn't see it when I read through it.
Okay.
I think of any project, we've probably given this one more diligence than we've done a lot of them.
Well, I think we give diligence to all of them.
Well, I know, but Scott threw us a curveball with this one and I don't know. I think we've really vetted this one out and it's nice that it's, we're able to do this. I think it's gonna simplify things going forward a lot. We started this conversation, we weren't sure this was legal to do, so I think we've gone a long way with this one. I think, I don't have any issues.
Agreed. Does anybody care to make a motion regarding the findings of fact, first of all?
I'll make the motion that findings of fact for applications SUP 2021-02-B and SUP 2015-01-E, SUP-2021-02, as presented in the Planning Department Report 2023-86 and being made a part of this motion be adopted.
Support.
Any further discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
And also make the motion that applications SUP 2021-02-B and SUP 2015-01-E be approved and identified going forward as SUP 2023-05, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 9, as indicated in PD Funding Department 2023-86.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
And don't bring it back again, Scott.
Driveway construction is happening.
Well, either one of you.
All right, moving along, item 7A, Planning Department Report 2023-82, Bish's RV Site Plan Review and Access Review. And we have a report, but I think there's also some news on that from staff?
Uh, yeah, so we got, this is, uh, there's also just some background to this application in the first place. It is, the site is actually CG and the use is, this used to be TCRV, it's been now called Bish's RV. It's, I believe, a national chain. The use that's there is otherwise by right and would be just a administrative site plan review, which the zoning illustrator, Mike Green, typically handles. However, there, they have requested an additional access onto Meadow Lane Drive. And the way that that section of the zoning ordinance is written, the planning commission actually has the authority to review requests for additional access. And there are certain standards that have to be met for that, which we can go over. But because of that, zoning illustrator decided to defer the entire site plan review as part of that. So that's why this is in front of you when what's otherwise the site is CG. But then also today, we were notified the owner was unable to be here. So they requested to actually just pull it from the agenda. We figured at least giving the background and a little kind of introduction so that when they're able to come, hopefully next month, you'll have seen it. And if you have any questions that you want us to follow up on, to do so in advance of that meeting, so. That's why we wanted to bring it, yeah.
Do they have legal access, I mean, Meadow Lane Village is a private road, right?
Oh, it's county.
That is county.
Oh, is it county?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was private, I think.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then, so they're just, they're just asking for the second entrance further away from the intersection?
Right.
I'm guessing probably with big RVs and stuff, it might be easier if you're further away from the intersection or something, or?
And also, you can actually see it on the aerial, there was this kind of dirt access, this kind of two-track back there. We looked that up, that was never approved on any previous site plan for this. Road commission, we didn't, we did not find any kind of, it was possibly just created from vehicles driving over it over and over. But yeah, I don't, I don't know specifically. The applicant did provide kind of a letter and asking why they wanted to. Their letter's dated July 5th and is right after their application. It was a response to our completeness review and they indicated why they wanted to have an additional access. But we indicated all of the standards to them.
John, we were chatting a little before the meeting. Do you want to maybe share some of your comments about one or two accesses and possibly relocating one access? Or they still end up with one, or just share some of those thoughts with the other?
Yeah, so there, they do have, obviously, that one that's kind of closer to US thirty-one at that intersection there, and then proposing a second one. And obviously, you can see the, if you look at C two-point-oh, that's the site plan. So you can see, if you look on that particular site, it's an L-shaped lot. The, the white area is basically kind of the existing area. And then the shaded area is basically all the new asphalt that they're going to be paving. So it's a lot of asphalt on this particular site. And so they were just looking to add in another driveway to the back. One option that we thought they could do is consolidate and create a single driveway somewhere in the middle of the site or where that could be back farther away from that intersection and accommodate all of the access onto the site. There's also, if you look on sheet C one-point-zero, they are removing, they have actually some access to the south, which is Vanry Furniture Store. If you look, you'll see a dashed line and then you'll see some lines going at an angle there. And it's an area marked D with the hexagon there. Is to remove asphalt there. So there's actually, and it's actually calls out that there's a TCRV signpost. There's a driveway parallel to that property line that's part of Vanry Furniture. Why, they're looking to disconnect from that. There could be, and maybe there's, for whatever reason, maybe Vanry does not want traffic going there, there in terms of RVs, but there could be some access point back there as well that kind of gives access to both Vanry Furniture and, and Bish's RV site, so.
And that would be like a cross-access connection. And we do, as we've reviewed a lot of these sites, either encourage cross-access or in many cases, cross-access being required as sites are redeveloped. And that's actually one of the standards for reviewing, even considering an additional access. So we didn't, I don't know if on Vanry's side, kind of why that, so we're just seeing what Bish's is proposing as disconnecting that. I don't know on Vanry's side or if there's a easement documented between them or not. Nothing that had been provided to us at this point.
One potential negative of cross-access there might be that it would allow the RV place then to have direct access out on the thirty-one, which I don't think would be very good for us or the township.
They already have it now, though, right?
No, their only access is off Meadow Lane, isn't it?
They run across Vanry's lot.
Yeah, they can right now, I don't know if it's, there's some pavement right up there and I think there's just a little bit of dirt between the two.
Stone or something.
Stone or something like that. So that's how it is actually, no, I think that's what they're suggesting is that they're removing that.
Eliminate that.
Eliminate that.
Don't we want them to keep into consideration the Olson Boulevard? Don't we want that to go north and go right to Vanry and right up at the Meadow Lane someday?
Are those things in the way of that access road going further north?
Well, right now, that Olson, um, right there in front of Action, Action Water Sports, there's a grade difference, but that runs almost up to the property line. And that, in my opinion, should go right up north in front of them other two businesses and tie it in Meadow Lane.
If there's room, do you think it's room for that?
Well, I mean, if my memory serves me right, there is. But, um, but that cross-connection goes all the way around through there and goes all the way down to Kentucky Fried Chicken then.
Yeah, you can actually see it on page one of the report.
Next time this is in front of us, this might be good to have some of this aerial stuff and the TIS stuff that you guys can show us.
All right, yeah, the time I didn't bring it made a whole bunch of aerial questions.
This is a great question, like Joe just asked, it'd be nice to see what he's talking about, the Olson access road. I know what he's talking about.
You can see it a little.
In relation to all this stuff would be very helpful.
It's hard to see, but yeah, page one of H shows it, or a little bit harder.
The last of page two, so Action Water Sports is immediately the next one south from Vanry. So that's Action Water, and that's where it currently, Olson Commerce Drive currently ends.
And there is a great difference there that somebody would have to work with. It's not a lot, four feet or something, but it's, uh, technically would.
Without jogging that Olson access road, though, it looks like it would, it would run into the Vanry existing building and the existing parking at.
The Vanry building is definitely the one that would be in the way.
Yeah, and then the parking that's right up two thirty-one or close to it by the RV place. So I, part of me likes the idea, Joe, but I'm not sure it's realistically feasible, but something to talk about.
There's certain room on the RV place, especially if you make it, you know, part of the condition. But if, if we have an authority, because they, they're going to increase, they're going to triple the amount of asphalt to the rear to start parking RVs and stuff.
Right, yeah, I don't know the circumstances of, or the history of like how Olson Commerce Drive came about and if there's any future plans. I think taking a look into that, if there's anything, kind of plans for that.
Well, I think historically, the reason that Olson Access Drive came in was because we didn't want millions of curb cuts off of thirty-one. And that was one contiguous property owner, so we gave them the curb cut and then they had their own internal road parallel.
Okay.
So that's why that's there and I like to think it's there for a really good reason.
Right.
But I would.
As far as provisions to extend it or anything like that.
Well, and maybe extending is good. I'm just thinking though, with it for Vanry or for the RV thing, if there's, I, I would hate to create some cross-access between the RV place and Vanry that gives the RV access on the thirty-one directly when they don't have it currently. That's adding.
They do have it currently, they, this.
It's just not shown then.
Well, yeah, it's hard, it's kind of hard to see. If you look on C one-point.
Well, they wouldn't have it legally, would they? Because they would be just trespassing on Vanry's property.
I don't know if they do, or we have not, at least I haven't seen an easement provided. If there is, we could look if there is, or ask the applicant to, if this exists, please provide it.
It's hard to, it's hard to see it, but on C one-point-oh, there's a part where it says TCRV signposts and then there's that hashed area. That is where there's actual connection currently, they're talking about removing that.
Yeah, okay.
You know, one thought here too is, and maybe we can look at this a little bit and maybe discuss with the applicant, but it obviously, something probably Vanry's not interested at this time, but is the possibility of removing that driveway altogether and having, you know, like what Joe was talking about. Maybe that connection to Olson Commerce Drive might not work for Vanry at this time. But maybe there still could be a somewhat of a connection, kind of a, of a drive going along the front of the RV place and connecting Vanry. Although that would be up to Vanry giving up that.
Kind of like putting it in place for the future.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't know what, what, if anything, we can talk about with Vanry now. But if the applicant for the RV is proposing to discontinue its connection to Vanry and discontinue its ability to get out on the thirty-one, I don't think we'd want to upset that applicant.
I'm suspicious that there's an actual easement that they're not showing us.
Well, I think that Vanry was put in second, I believe the RV place was first. So when Vanry come in there, maybe they just started cutting across there. Because Vanry was a lot more recent, right, than, than the TCRV.
Well, I don't remember now which one, chicken or the egg, I don't remember.
You could at least check and see if there's an easement on Vanry's property.
Yeah, right.
Provides an entitlement to the RV site.
That's pretty high-speed traffic going through there. Fewer people coming in and out from a dead stop, the better. So I'd personally rather see the RV traffic coming in and out of the RV place via Meadow Lane Drive rather than thirty-one.
All right, that's good to know. You know, one of the things we can look at is, you know, obviously, nothing's happening on Vanry, it's only on the RV site. We're, one of the things we can do is kind of anticipate what can we do now on the RV site that should at some point, Vanry, that might change hands, something else might go in there. There might be, if there is an easement already in place, maybe that, you know, that driveway could go away and there could be a connection up to Meadow Lane. Just a thought, I mean, it's.
Right, where I agree with John about the, the access to thirty-one, I hate to eliminate a cross-access if there's one there. It's just because we might want it someday, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's a trade-off, it's a balance. I'm just thinking with all the pavement that they're going to do around, they could probably do a cross-access somewhere in the back without, without getting more traffic onto the highway.
Not that it matters, but why, is it shown with a double blue line, is that two separate parcels?
There are two parcels, yes.
Always been owned by TCRV, or they just acquired that second one?
Um, it was currently, at least.
It must be TCRV because it borders.
Yeah.
It borders Vanry, so it's an odd-shaped piece.
Right, it's just that they have, happen to have that back portion of the one behind Vanry.
That real narrow strip up to the highway seemed really odd, you know.
Right. My, my guess is that Vanry in that flag lot where.
Yeah, that's a flagpole lot by definition right there.
Yep.
I would say that the Vanry parcel and that other one were one, at one time, and then they probably cut that off for Vanry and then created that so it would still have that access to the rear end of that parcel.
Right, and we did indicate if it, if this is going to be one development, that they should merge these parcels. Because we also wouldn't have flag lots.
Right.
Uh, as often anymore anyway, so.
Yeah, that lot would not be able to be created today.
This could resolve that.
Not unless you, yeah, but if it reached out to the Olson Road, you could punt it in there. But, well, we're, we're not going to do anything with this tonight anyway, because the applicant's not here.
Right.
But that's some questions, I mean, is there an easement? You know, one question, can we require those lots? Can we require those two lots to be merged into one? Or is, or is what we're doing, you know, and then I think I'd be curious if the county road commission cares about two accesses that close together on Meadow Lane.
Well, they would have to get the permit to make it a legal one.
Those are things we could kind of get prepared ahead of time for.
And just to go back to kind of one of the initial parts of that is the qualifying standards for the additional access. That's that one through four that Steve mentioned, it's kind of, starts at the bottom of page two.
Yep, and these are in the zoning ordinance, so aside from correct, also getting a road commission review of this, they're our own standards. And we had put together the four standards being, the request is not a result of a self-created issue by current or previous ownership, request is not contrary to a previously proved plan or project that limited access to the parcel, cross-access easements are provided to adjacent properties and all parcels are interconnected to achieve the intent of the section. And each additional access is located in such a manner that there's a minimum of three hundred feet of separation measured from center line to center line of the current and proposed road access. So in staff's review of those four standards is a self-created issue. It's, it appears that this second access on Meadow Lane, that's kind of this dirt two-track, just kind of happened over time. So for both that first standard and second standard regarding a previously proved plan or project limiting access, like we could, do not have a previous plan that showed two access points on here or permits at least that we could find. And we did not see any information on providing cross-access either to Vanry or the other direction to along Meadow Lane Drive, providing cross-access that direction. So, and this is one where it's, the wording is also provided that each of the following standards can be met. This is not a, they meet some of them and not the others, you have to meet each and every one of these four standards.
So I think what you're saying in the staff report is unless the applicant can supply some information that they haven't supplied so far.
Yeah.
They probably don't meet the standards of our ordinance and give them a second access.
Standards, yeah.
But your thought, that you expressed earlier, John, was if they only get one, maybe if they relocate it, they can accomplish what they're trying to accomplish and still do that with only one access, just put it in another spot.
Yeah.
A better spot.
Yeah, I think, you know, something that just kind of came to my mind is when we had the Shell Station there at the corner of South Airport and Lafranier Road. And they had, they used to have four entrances, two off of South Airport and two off Lafranier, and they got it down to two. One of those was, you know, certainly they get a lot of vehicles coming in and out of there and then they get oil trucks in there, gas trucks in there delivering and so forth. And they kind of created one off of South Airport that's wide enough to accommodate turning movements and so forth that can get in and out of it. So, I mean, certainly we understand the nature of the vehicles that they have, their trailers and other RVs. They're, they're going to want easy access in and out of there. So it seems like there could be a design that could consolidate that into one drive, could be located in a way that best serves that parcel. At least, at least for that portion along Meadow Lane.
You look at, if you look at page two of the report and look closely at that picture, exactly what John, it seems worried about happening appears to be happening now. If you look at the tire, the wear marks on the road, you can see, it's very clear.
Where they're coming from.
It's very clearly going from RV onto Vanry out onto the highway.
Yeah.
You can see it. John, your fears are confirmed.
So unless Vanry gave them an easement to do that, we may be happy to see them voluntarily giving that up.
There's no easement there, but I just looked at that picture, I go, yeah, there's, that's a traffic pattern, there's no, no denying it, so.
So that needs to be resolved either way, like, is there an easement there or not?
And if there's not an easement, we don't want to encourage them to get one, we let them close it up. They've got issues too about outdoor storage and landscaping too, as I read in your report. And again, I don't know, we, they're not here to talk with us and this may not be the night to do it. But it looks like when the time comes, we've got, outdoor storage is one thing that makes some sense. But to what level, to what extent? And, and the landscaping, they got a lot of land, so why waive landscaping requirements is beyond me, but we'll see.
I would add to that, you know, you pointed out, Steve, regarding impervious surfaces, that the standard review apparently in, that's applicable here is that the amount of impervious surface has been limited to, on the site to the extent practical.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, you just calculate.
Yeah.
It's eighty-two percent impervious.
Yeah.
I don't think that they made any effort to limit it.
Right.
I'm also concerned about their stormwater management plan, is it going to be reviewed by our engineers part of the standard?
It will be, yep.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
I will rely on Gordy Fraser there.
Yeah, so there was basically a lot of things, and we were even going, if they were here, recommend tabling it to address, there's a lot of things to work on still, so.
Any other comments or thoughts that people have from what they've looked at that we haven't talked about yet that you want staff to have in the, in their minds as they continue to talk with these folks? Okay? Anything else you want to elicit from us about this?
I think that's good, I don't, I don't think we need a motion to table, unless you want a specific motion to table it. They could use the one that's there, or we just accept that we talked about it and.
Seems like if it's on your agenda and you had discussion, it seems like it makes sense to table, but I'm not sure. We do have a, we do have a second motion there that's provided.
That's the second motion, skip the first one, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, I think just from the standpoint, it's on the agenda, you had discussion, you're not taking action to move it forward.
Motion, the application SPR twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, submitted by Taylor Eschbach of Kimley-Horm of Michigan, Inc. Be tabled to allow the applicants to address the outstanding items in the planning department report twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash eighty-two.
Support. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have no more public, so we will not be receiving any more public comment, it looks like. Next is other business, nothing shown here. Is there anything else that staff knows we should be talking about tonight as other business?
Nope, I think that's pretty much it.
All right, and then, um, did you want to talk about this letter that was on our table, but we haven't really talked about it?
I can talk on, under items for next agenda because it kind of relates to that.
All right, we'll move into that, the next item is items for next agenda.
So obviously, in your next session, your study session here in the latter part of July is going to be back on the master plan. And we're going to be getting into nodes, districts, and corridors. So those are kind of places and corridors. This is now where it's going to be start moving into mapping and, and this will segue into future land use designations and so forth. So we're kind of done with the broad policy that has goals and objectives, and now we're going to be looking at some maps. We're also going to be doing, as I mentioned earlier, community engagement this Saturday. We will try out this idea of the pop-up event. And that's where I think Kara's comments were, Kara's been at several of our meetings in the audience here, so she's been kind of following along, we've had some. We've had some conversations with her and she seems like an interested resident. And so we're really appreciative of her involvement. I think she's always had some really constructive ideas. So her comments I think are related to that pop-up event in, in terms of the visual preference survey. I think she must have seen some of the images that we shared at the last study session. And I get what she's talking about is when we look, some of those images that we showed to you last time that we would be putting in that visual preference survey, maybe some outdated ones. For instance, we did show a duplex that's actually close to this location that's in the township. It's kind of a ranch-style duplex, may not be something that really is more modern, you know, materials or style. But what we do like to show people when we have examples of that, they may be a bit dated, but it also, we can say, these are existing in the township already and here is a location. So it's not something that we're trying to bring into the township and say, hey, here's some new type of housing that we can actually point to say, there are duplexes in the township. Here's one example. Doesn't mean necessarily it would be built in that form today. So that's why we like to show, some of these may not look as, as current or may look a little different because they were built a few decades ago. There is also, you know, this idea of, of looking at input from other areas. We're kind of at this point doing this one and we're going to see how it goes. We're kind of getting our feet wet, dipping our toes in and seeing that, is it something, you know, see what our response is. We'll be out there for three hours on Saturday. It's supposed to be some nice weather. We know the dog park will be active, the pavilion will be busy. We'll see what the kind of response is from people and we'll go from there. And then our last comment about density is, one of the things that we've learned is we have to be very careful on some of the terminology that we use with people. You know, we can, as planners, we can get caught up in a lot of these concept stuff that you read in the zoning ordinance, you know, related to density. We try to avoid those terms. And also quite frankly, in like a previous survey that we did for the Barlow-Garfield neighborhood, we did a visual preference survey, actually we found out that people are okay with density provided it looks attractive. If you design it so that it has landscaping, so that the materials that are used, so that the building has a certain style and character to it, they are less concerned about the intensity. And that includes the height of the building and so forth. So we try to not show them stuff that, these are simple images and we're just trying to get some, simple concepts across with not getting too deep into what these can be. Plus, we have to be mindful that we don't have a lot of walkable areas in our community currently. We do have some elements that are tied to the city, like when we talk about the Barlow area and Woodmere, those are potentially walkable, but it falls off really quickly and you get into areas that are more traditional suburban development. So we have to be careful when we show people some of these to note that we're still, while we're encouraging walking and we're looking at trail systems and so forth, we don't necessarily maybe have a pattern that's as tight as like the grid system in the city. So that's where context is important when we talk about this as well.
Yeah, it's sort of what catches your eye when, like you're taking a visual preference survey, like we can show images of, like these are all duplexes, but if what catches our eyes, like, oh, that building looks really nice, like that might be the thing that they see and it's sort of just, we'll gather kind of whatever feedback we have and it could come in a lot of different angles and viewpoints and that's totally fine. I think focusing on the visual preference survey is also just not getting into the weeds of like, what future land use category do you think should go here? Because no one's going to know what that means. Yeah, so get the feedback that's going to be valuable to us and that is appropriate for that situation. And for people who are, we're calling it a pop-up event, so trying to just capture people who are out and about, who are not like necessarily actively thinking about this, even though it's publicized and anyone can come, kind of capturing some of that other type of feedback as well.
And it looks like you're going to also bring back to us for more discussion, some possible talk about the zoning districts for our two and our three, like we started to talk the other, last meeting, okay?
Yep.
Anybody else got things they want to suggest be on the agenda for two weeks from now?
No, other than, is everybody going to be here two weeks from now?
I'm, I'm going to be.
Yeah, I was asked to make sure we have, you know, everybody else getting here?
So we'll have a quorum, okay. You know, Molly will be back.
As far as we know, yeah.
So I'll be, I'll be missing that one, but I'll be back in August.
Oh, wait.
Okay, I'll make a motion adjourn.
I'm not sure, I was just going to say, I'm not sure I will be here on the 26th. I, I'm in Lansing now all day that day. If I get out of Lansing by four o'clock, I'll be here.
Okay. Well, thanks for the heads up. Sounds like we still have a quorum. We will have a quorum, just with these four, plus if Molly makes it, we even have more. Okay, so Bob moved, we adjourned, so we're adjourned.